I'd like to call and order the meeting, Nelson City Council, August 17th, 2020. I'd like to take a moment and have a moment of prayer before we adjourn. Father God, we thank you for today. Lord, we just ask that you would be in our midst. We ask that you would lead, God, and direct each one of us here today making decisions, to make the best decisions possible. Help us to rightly divide and motion, Father God, and to come together as a unit. Father, we ask that you be with our servicemen and women, our police officers, our EMT firefighters, and our servicemen here and overseas. Father, we thank you for today again, and we just ask that you would bless us and be with us. In Jesus' name. James, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands as one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we're going to move nine C to five?
Because we have people here who can take questions and then make it with a picture.
So we want to amend, you said we want to make a amendment, move nine C to five?
Yes, for public appearance, so then make it an adult appearance and qualify these as any questions.
Can I get a motion from the councilman to move, discuss, and vote on and adopt the changes of the fire service agreement with Cherokee County to five?
You want to do that with B and C?
SDS and fire?
No, I think y'all just need the fires, the time, the night was on the time crunch was the fire one for tonight.
Well, they're here, let them go ahead and do B and C. Do they have anything, do we have any questions about the SDS?
Is that okay with y'all?
Okay. That way you can get rolling. So I'd like to get a motion to move B and C, the SDS Cherokee County, and the adopt of fire services agreement with Cherokee County to five. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion that we move nine B and nine C to public appearance.
Give me a second, please.
I'll say it.
James? Okay. With our changes, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
We're just going to discuss the building requirements for tonight, we're just going to discuss it.
We can do it, just y'all vote.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I need a motion to approve the agenda with the change.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda with the change.
Second. Second, okay. Now have public appearance.
Don't vote on that.
On favor?
You got a question in a second, they didn't vote yet.
On favor? Do you have any?
On the ninth.
Yeah.
Murder.
All righty. If you would like to come, Mr. Cooper, and discuss the SDS for Cherokee County.
Where the sign will be up there. You want to start with the fire thing or you want to start with the SDS? I know there's a time crunch on the fire one, so you get one, it can be me or see.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, my pleasure to be with you today. My name is Jerry Cooper, I'm the county manager of Cherokee County. And it's been a pleasure working with the mayor and you guys over the many years I've been here, so thanks again for allowing me to be with you tonight. Service over strategy, State of Georgia requires counties and municipalities to review all services provided in the county and then come to an agreement on the various services. There's 56 different Form 2s in your packet, ranging from the airport to code enforcement to fire, road maintenance, parks and red, just a litany of different services. Now, some of these Form 2s are not applicable to the city of Nelson, and that's noted in the packet for you. But we have a deadline this year in October to adopt the Form 2s and submit those to Department of Community Affairs. Before they're reviewed, and once adopted by the one, then we are then in full compliance with the State of Georgia.
And Kelsey and I reviewed those and made a list, and I believe your attorney has made those changes and got them back.
Everything that does, all the changes, items are actually in there, so everything, they did, been asked, done, because they fixed everything.
I'm hoping for any questions you may have on.
Has anybody had an opportunity to review these SDS?
I've delivered some of them, I look at seeing them.
What Kelsey and I did was we went through and everything that we had that was in here, for example, like, they had us stand for code enforcement and building inspections, we had them removed, we had them removed Nelson and just leave Waleska there, and they've made the changes for us, so, and we do appreciate that, and it was last minute apologies for that, so, I believe that we have a clear packet now, so, that's good, and based on what our needs are, and what's been agreed to by the council, so. Can we go ahead and vote during this time for a draw? I'll go ahead and just ask each council member, so Councilman Handby, Nathan Handby, do you have any questions regarding SDS?
How many, is there any fun changing with this progress?
It's a 10-year agreement.
It's a 10-year agreement, it's not, the things that they added in there that were not supposed to be in there, we had them removed, and we sent that, that's what this, that's the list.
We're still taking care of the same stuff we've been taking care of.
Yes, and can expand, thank you, Mr. Cooper, at any time we need to for the city. So, Councilwoman, Martha, do you have anything? No. Okay. James, no. Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the SDS for Cherokee County?
I make a motion to approve the SDS for Cherokee County.
Can I get a second?
Second.
On the favor? You announced, thank you. Okay. Next up is adopt changes to the fire services agreement with Cherokee County. I'm really glad that you came out to discuss this one. I got it, and I understand we're rolling back some and doing some other things in order to make everybody happy in the, outside of the city limits, so, but I'll let you explain that.
It's a bit complicated, however, we're just changing one division in the agreement, that's section 3A, that's how you calculate the payment of fires for fire services. City representatives in the last few months have encouraged us to use the interest premium tax, which is to be used for services that primarily benefit unincorporated residents. And so with that request, we moved down this path, setting three public appearances than we did, had conducted three, one is open, we'll finalize that this evening. And what that does is, fire service district rate, which is tonight, it would be 3.483, there shouldn't be any change in what you pay, other than, you know, a slight difference in the rate. Our current rate now is 3.269, it increased to 3.483. That's just the personnel and the salary increases, and those things to try to keep up with market. But what we've done, we've taken that IPT and transferred those funds, a lot of those funds into the fire district, which for unincorporated, you can only use it for unincorporated services. We can't use it for services provided to cities. So what we've done is in the formula, we've taken that to account, IPT revenue, and the way the form is written is as if we calculate the same way we calculate today. And so we'll be transparent when we do that with you, but the rate for you is 3.483. The rate for unincorporated is about 2.173, because we use about 10 million of the IPT revenue to offset the fire district rates. Now, the general fund rates, I actually increased too because of the loss of revenue, but overall, our rates are the same throughout all the three, the general fund, fire, and department. Overall, it hasn't changed, it's 8.965 for all three.
Okay. Yeah, I know that when Jeff came out, he explained that to us, and he did a great job explaining it, and I said, you're going to have to come back. I knew that it kind of stayed the same, but your numbers changed on both sides to make it even, so.
So might will be an increase on the tax bill to cover this?
Now, if you look at the way we, if we didn't move the IPT to fire district, and we calculated the rate, it's as if we calculated the rate the same we do today. There would be a change in rate because of the increase in salaries, a slight increase without point two.
I think our fire tax last year was 92,000, it's 96 last year? And I think if they use that rate, actually, calculation rate within a difference of a couple thousand dollars, I don't mind.
So it would be a huge increase for you about?
Yes, it's based on the, like, the actual valuation of taxes, and then it comes out, it comes from money that we receive from the taxes, so we're paying it in the tax, so it's not coming out of our general fund, but it's based on the valuations of the homes or property taxes.
Do you have any questions, councilman? Can I get a motion to approve and adopt the changes to the fire service agreement with Cherokee County?
I make a motion to approve and adopt the, what did you say?
Fire services agreement with Cherokee County.
Fire services agreement with Cherokee County.
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
On the favor? You announced, thank you. We do appreciate you being able to sign.
Hold on, I'll get you something.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Wait just a minute, I'll get you something.
You have good evening.
Jerry? One second, we're going to give you a sign.
Oh, you can say that one.
Next up is item six, approval of minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes for July 23rd, 2020?
I make a motion to approve the minutes, July 23rd, 2020.
One second.
Second.
On the favor? You announced, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes for July 27th, 2020?
I make a motion to approve the minutes, July 27th.
Give me a second.
A second there.
On the favor? You announced, thank you. Okay. Next up is department reports. Kelsey, could you deliver our police report to us this afternoon?
Lieutenant Simmons, this is for the chair of the side. Simmons said that in July we had 12 calls for service, this, the meeting got pushed back from August 3rd, so this was for the, actually, for the realized calls. Two alarm calls, one domestic, two suspicious persons, one suspicion activity, reinformation, one accident, one firearm discharge, one harassing phone call. So there was domestic that was verbal, and we know arrest made, nothing else major like that, so.
Not too bad. All right. Next up is mayor reports. Earlier today, I received a call from Stephen Johnson, formally withdrawing his candidacy for the November 3rd, 2020 Nelson City Council seat. So we'll make sure that the supervisor of elections has a copy of this and make sure all the actions are checked inside.
Yeah, I gotta see what they need, I don't know if they need anything more than that or not.
I think he, so when he had delivered this today, I believe that he's already delivered a copy to them as well, but we'll just make sure on our end that they have it.
Is that like one candidate, is that correct?
Not least one candidate.
So more need to be in election. Unless there's a primary or something.
I don't know of any.
Nobody else reached for it?
Yeah, nobody else reached, or just the one. So how does that work? Does she wait till November the 3rd and take the seat? Does she have to have a vote at all, or?
This, I get confused about my seats, and I didn't look in advance. Which seat is this?
It's a little over a year.
Okay, so this is still in a vacant seat, correct? I believe that after the period passes for any potential, when was qualifying over?
July 27th, 2029.
Okay.
So qualifying was done, um, three weeks ago.
I think there's seven days for write-ins, but that has already passed. What I believe is that the remaining candidate would get the seat. You may have to officially call off the election, I'll check on that, see if you need to vote to do that, but she would go ahead and take the seat.
I'll check before the election.
At your next meeting.
Okay, at the September meeting? Okay. Could you verify before we do that?
Well, we just did it in Canada.
Oh, did you? Okay.
Yeah, because they were trying to, they're qualified on Friday, they had one candidate, they wanted to take the seat tonight, but they had to wait such days. We've already had that seven days.
We have, they did the same thing, he got it.
I'll let you check this to see if you didn't like, actually, vote to cancel the election, so she would go ahead, regardless, she would go ahead and be sworn in.
At the next meeting, okay. Like, go ahead and get on the paperwork.
And that's why.
And stuff that we handed on that, new, you know, new candidates.
I don't see what we do that.
And she's like, you're not playing.
Yep.
Yeah, so, okay. The next thing is Miranda will be out tonight, everybody knows that already, but she did put, I believe she put her financials in here for you to review, and they were in the packet that was handed out as well. So, does anybody have any questions for us to take back to her on the financials? No? Okay. All right. The next thing is the fire report. I'll let you take it down, Kelsey, since you have it.
This was for the second quarter, and it shows that there were total incidents inside the city, we had a total of 16, the overall for Cherokee County was 4,036. Ambulance transports, there were a total of seven. You know, there were no structured fires, there wasn't response time for those. Average response time for EMS incidents, nine minutes, 27 seconds. And 90% tall response time to EMS incidents, it shows 11 minutes and 57 seconds.
Is Higgins responding to any in Nelson says they work from station up here, or? No, I'm just joking.
I don't know if they really, like, if there's an emergency or something, then they may.
I know in my neighborhood, it's Cherokee, but I'm not sure here, so. I did ask Miranda to see if she could get a representative to give us a report from the Higgins side to start in September, so hopefully we'll have something for them. I've asked for it a couple times, but I think there's been a lot going on there.
Yeah.
All right. Let's move on down to eight, unfinished business, an update on Highway 5 repair, continue?
This is just verbal, I didn't put anything in here. I talked to Cherokee County about the road repairs out here at Kinsley Avenue, and last I heard they were looking at the period end of August, beginning of September, doing, getting the bumps ground down and getting some of that road fixed and doing an HCM way. I think it's on here for another area tape, but I'll do it in the next, sort of, in the part of it. But they were looking at it in August, beginning of September, to get that stuff fixed, so there were delays due to weather and then delays due to some COVID messes and everything that.
About patches, a period, did they look at?
Yeah, that was on the other products, it's something to go and look at, and actually, one of them we gave the go-ahead on, it was on fire products, and the other one was a good bit warm because it was a lot more warm, but that's not a G, so, anticipation. It's 9G, you have to wait till the very end.
Oh, 9G. I thought you were talking about nine grand.
No, it's not that much. But half that.
Did we add on here to forecast improvement?
No, because the gentleman's over here, I can't.
Gotcha, okay.
I'm sorry, but I can't, but it's already in the center.
B, I would be discussing vote on a photographer for the city website.
Keith had talked about it last time, he was here, he was looking at, or showing us the website stuff, and I guess he had talked to several different companies. The one that actually sent a bid back in to him had given a price of $300, and I guess there were several different categories he could ask for prices on, and it covered all seven. There were, I can't remember who he said that, four photographers he talked to, but the one that actually submitted the bid is the one that he said he had actually seen it work and had recommended them for.
I have a friend of mine who also does photography on the coming, and she is substantially more, she's about $900 to come out, make the trip out and do the stuff, so.
Yeah, Mike Neese does it, and it's not free.
It's expensive, yeah. So.
What's the company name?
The link to the website is there, oh, hold on. This literally came in this afternoon, it looks kind of stuffy, here's how I read through it. David Akovian, it looks like, is right before the license section where it says here's his website. There's a link.
Is that the way you pronounce that?
I hope so, because that's how I pronounced it. But I can send you forward the email to you if you want to look at the website.
For Che Brown?
I have no idea.
He's local.
Yeah.
He's local.
Is it sort of the threshold of stuff to do, just because we've been talking a lot and just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page with it.
Would that be at 300 bucks?
Yeah, well, that's how you pay to this guy, as many do.
So is anybody, nobody has any questions about that?
No.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the photographer for $300?
I make a motion to approve $300.
Can I get a second?
Yeah, I'll say.
On the favor? Okay. You announced, thank you. Discuss and vote on Higgins Chamber of Commerce visitors guide, I know that we did this last year.
This is a different one, I thought it was the same thing, too.
Well, it looks like the same.
Well, one's a tourism app, and then one is, there's two different things, but they sent this out, and they want to advertise this one, so, here you go. They said it could be good for tourism and for the Marvel Museum.
That's up to you guys. I know we did it, we did it once, so. How much is that?
They had to pay $595 for a court page. A full page, $1,000, full page, $1,200.
What a whole page is, is 3.5 by 1.9.
Yes, yes.
I would have spent it on a dumpster or something, everybody gets a benefit out. That's the way I found it.
Barbara?
I was thinking to not do it.
Okay. Right. Anybody else have any comments on it? Nathan?
No.
James?
One, no.
But in a few seconds here, maybe we want to talk about something with the Civil
and Roadless Regional Commission, with some of this stuff that we do need to be doing. I know this year they canceled, like, Marvel Fest and all of that stuff, so, a lot of the stuff we would be advertising for is canceled, so, I can see not doing it this year, but it is something moving forward.
Whatever. If we get this website going, it should, we would be able to advertise it under that one.
Yeah, but these are, like, they put them in the, in their locations.
It puts something on the map, so to speak, and we're encouraged to do that for some reason.
Yeah, with one apple, that's for advertising, what they live in this year.
But yeah, this year, I agree, I think the money could be spent wisely, I don't know, so. Let's see, so, we were going to, so we discussed it, we're not going to vote on it to do it, we're just going to say we're not doing it.
Not doing it.
Okay.
I told them.
If nobody votes to do it, you're not doing it.
There you go. Okay, next is item nine, new business, discuss and discuss the possibility of adding lights to the ball field.
This is just a special, I don't have anything in here, we've got one team running the ball field right now, and they're there Tuesdays and Thursdays, with it starting to get darker early, and once we made the time change, we wanted to know if it's possible or that we would have any, if there was any possibility of us adding lights back out there, so they can continue to use the ball field through the fall.
We don't know who they're writing it for, we don't know what they've been doing.
I don't find it big news, man. No, actually, when we had them tucked down, you know.
I told them.
When we redid the ball field, when I was on council before, and it was a tremendous amount of power bill.
Really?
Mercury lights, right?
Wow. Yeah, that's why, I mean, I didn't know that price.
I knew that there would be, I knew that there would be a cost associated with it.
That was probably what it paid.
Okay. Any questions on that? Next up is item, I've already done B and C, we're going to go to D, which is discuss and vote on fee schedule. I went back and looked at our policies, and we did have a fee schedule in there, but I was talking to James earlier, and he said he thought it was changed in 2011. Regardless, it was still out of date, if you guys need a little bit more information on that, I can get it, but currently, right now, we need to make sure that we have, we're covered for second visits, and if we, for some reason, you know, fail an inspection, that we're covered for second visits, third visits, and then if it's a third visit, then it, I think in our old, the old policy was like a $250 charge.
It's right here, it's the first page of this one. First inspection, $55, second one, $100, third one's $250. The problem is, is we have this fee schedule, it's very in-depth, it covers every possible thing we could charge anybody for, bathroom fans, every single light, you know, luxury light in your house, I mean, none of the nitty-gritty, anything you do, anything in your house. The problem is, is here we have our little building packet that we use to get out, and you flip over to reinspection fees on the second page, and it says first turn down $25, second turn down $50, third turn down $75, which contradicts what's in our fee schedule. I don't know which one was done first, which one, this one was, but this is the packet that I'm supposed to use when people fill it out, this is what we have behind the counter. So I can't charge people within this fee schedule, which is much more realistic when the one that I give them fill out, so that's not the case.
Do you remember, Jeff, when something may have been approved that differs from what's in our policy book?
I do not remember. Which ones?
The fee schedule is in which? The fee schedule that's here, I took out of the, like, the actual fee schedule book, and it says it was approved May 6th in 2011.
Well, imagine, that looks to be more recent than the package.
Yeah, I would think so, too, but this is all I have as far as when people come in to do permits, like, the packet of stuff that we use to.
Cross out the fees and attach the new one, or redo it?
Well, that's what I'm, well, we've been going through and just looking at the stuff, like, for other counties and stuff, and it's just, even like the, like the math problems, like, to get to the fees and stuff, it, like the CEO, basically, you take square footage and multiply it times $40, and then multiply it times .0025. Basically, if you take away your square footages and remove your decimal number two points, that's your equation right there, instead of doing this complex math problem.
I don't want to do that.
Well, I'm just saying, it's like, it just, there's not a whole lot of logic to it, whereas if you go to like.
Comprehensive, so I had to come from somewhere, somebody's recommendation, I don't know.
Yeah, what do you go to, like, Higgins, like, their CEOs, it's done by square foot, up to 1,000 square feet, it's 125, up to 2,000, it's 150. It just kind of gives a breakdown without getting super specific.
Can we not just adopt what they got on?
Well, that's what I have there, that we, to kind of give y'all an idea, and we don't need to adopt every single thing that they have in there, because they get to where it's not, instead of trying to, to give somebody a fee for every outlet they have in their house, or if they put a bath fan in, and if they, you know, you're literally giving a fee for every single thing that they do, you get like a base permit fee, plus there might be something little on top of that, that it just, it simplifies the process, you know, and who's going to honestly tell you the truth how many outlets are put in somewhere if they got to go in?
What's the, what's their base schedule on reinspections? As they show?
It's all, I mean, all of that's, it's all in here, like, their entire, reinspection fees for building inspections, each of its 50 bucks.
So you have these, 25 dollars?
30 to 50, depending on which one, what inspection it is.
They used to reinspection with 25 dollars.
Well, that's what this says, is that we charge 25, the packet that we're using says $25, but I have to pay in between 30 and 50.
Yeah, see, I'd like to go and over that, huh?
So, I mean, I know these are wrong, but I can't give them these fees if the packet So I mean, I know these are wrong, but I can't give them these fees if the packet I give them says this. Now granted, when somebody fails, they usually only fail one time. So it might be five bucks the difference of it, it's not a drastic difference.
I know we mentioned last meeting too, that the Pickens County fee schedule is more in line with Milton's fee schedule. It's a little bit different in some places, but I think it's, I don't think it's near as aggressive as Cherokee's as far as toward the Pickens. I don't want to burden anybody, but I do think that we need to send it.
They benefit that's more going to Pickens County.
I believe so.
Well, well, it's more used to the Pickens County, Holland Pickens County stuff too.
I'm going to send them a, you don't want to vote on it tonight, make a vote on it in its meeting if you want to continue. But I just need something, because everything's conflicting. Like I can't give somebody a packet that says this, you know, twenty-five dollars and then hit them with a fifty dollar fee.
I mean, I think all the, all the information is here, though.
But I mean, do you want to do everything inherent you're going to take out? Because this has for alcohol, has for, it basically would replace our Kentucky schedule, which I'm fine with. I mean, I don't see an issue with it.
Good.
But it has landfills, it has everything that I believe we have in ours as well. But it just, it doesn't get to. I mean, like their fee schedule is like, this is the entire fee schedule for Pickens County. It's like five or six pages. We have a book. It's literally, I mean, the stuff that's here.
It's been simplified, you don't. Here comes all the errors, you can adopt the whole thing.
This is just the ones for construction.
Yeah, and I think that's what I was getting to, I think that it does simplify things.
This is ours.
Yeah. And so as a community, we would benefit from it.
Yeah.
Our fee book is probably not that, the fee schedule for everything.
If you, it'll simplify, underneath, everybody is, what they do, I find. We got over everything. If y'all see anything.
I mean, I've looked over, I don't see any issue with it. Even, I've compared it to Cherokee's, it's actually fairly similar to Cherokee. But Cherokee hits you with the impact fee for going to house, which Pickens doesn't.
Or new building.
Yeah.
And that impact fee is like twenty-six hundred dollars. Yes, it's expensive. So if somebody goes to put something over two hundred square feet on a property, you're going to get hit with that.
You see anything matter with us voting on it tonight?
No. Does anybody have any questions before we move on? Martha, do you have anything?
Is there anything in there about what you don't, things you can do without being permanent? Does Pickens have a list?
Pickens doesn't have a list. And I've been on the phone with them numerous times this week, even though like whenever I talked to them, the answers were actually very similar to what Cherokee did. And I had conversations with them ours, and Sylvia this week too. And even the stuff that Cherokee has, because I have that's in the next section. A lot of that's taken from the International Building Code. I think there are a lot of us just copying and pasting and it's very, it's still very generic. So it's not, you're not getting into these super specified lists like we have for our fee schedule where you, yes for this, yes for this, where you're getting, because you're going to come into situations with everything where there's an exception to every rule. But it does, like if you're changing your footprint in your house, if you're changing like your roof line, if you're, you know, if you're changing the structure, then yes, you need a permit. You do something that needs someone that has a license, plumber, an electrician, yes, you need a permit. Do you need a permit to take off and replace siding? No. You know, do you need a permit to change a roof? No, not unless you're changing the pitch of your roof.
Footprint of it.
Yeah, I don't think Pickens should have to get a permit to change their roof.
It's only if, it's only if you're changing, if you're adding, you know.
Right now, I mean, you're supposed to get a permit, ain't you? By our code, you're not supposed to.
Not permitted.
Well, if I'm not sure, because we don't have anything that's specified, like a specific list, I call him and just ask him.
And we, plus you also have the International Building Codes and they don't require it either. So, I mean, you could require it, but I don't. I mean, I don't, I don't think, again, that's undue, you know.
I don't think we should charge people for trying to keep their house up.
Then I agree.
That's like re-plumbing a house. You have to, you shouldn't have to have a permit to re-plumb your house.
To make their marriage, something like that.
Yeah, well, and I don't know, I mean, I think that falls into that, that's that gray area where, I wouldn't notice, I'd call William and ask him, because you're still hiring a licensed contractor.
What you do that you save.
That's the difference.
Yeah, and that's where you sign the home unrapidate, that kind of thing. If you won't.
But you still have to, I mean, if the contractor would have to get one, you would have to get one too.
Well, see, because I didn't even know you had to have a permit for like HVAC replacement. I had like a company call me and they're like, I need to get a permit. I'm like, what are you getting a permit for? We're changing that HVAC and it's up here in Nelson X. Like, well, it's in our fee schedule, I mean, we do have stuff for it, but it's, I mean, legitimate companies know to call me a permit. So there's.
I don't think in the past we've just gone out and checked to see if people were having a workout and not going to do it, but.
And if they're, if they're hiring a licensed company to come out and do it, you know, clearly the company knows what they're doing anyway. And I don't think we should be permit Nazis either, we're going and harassing.
But most people also.
Clear concise answer, so if somebody's calling me, I know more or less. And there's still going to be times that, you know, even whenever you're looking through these things, that there's still some gray area there. Where it's, you call and you get an answer.
But because of that International Building Code, contractors, licensed contractors knows what they need. They know what they need, A, but they know what they need a permit for too. So. And the latest copy of that's 2018 in our Tallahassee, or Tallahassee one, so we would have it, so we can.
Look at it.
Visualize and get visual on it. Can we, can I get a motion to adopt Pickens fee schedule?
I'd like to motion to adopt Pickens fee schedule on building permits.
Oh, okay.
The permitting separate.
Do you want that to be the same as theirs if they change it in the future? Or you just want to adopt this one as it is right now, the presently using?
Personally, I would say the one I have now, because I know they're changing stuff. So I would wait and see what's coming down the line.
And then we need to re-adopt again.
Yeah.
Specific about that, I guess, in the vote, your amendment is that you're adopting this particular.
Yeah.
So can I get a motion to approve, to approve the current Pickens fee schedule?
I'd like to motion to approve the current Pickens fee schedule.
And I need a second.
I'll second that one.
James, all in favor? You ready? Thank you. Okay. Next is to, to discuss and vote on what requires building permits. And that's what, do you have that?
That's the stuff from Cherokee and the stuff that I discussed a lot.
It looks like Ball Ground is even more restrictive. They even block it for all renovations.
Yeah.
Which is not.
Well, I think it's still copied and painted, I think it's the same thing that Cherokee has, like if you look at it.
Can we look search this more before?
Yeah, that's what we talked about, I'll maybe on this tonight.
Yeah, this one, so.
It's the stuff that we need answers to, so when people are calling and asking me, it's not, I mean, I mean, email Jeff and ask him.
Ask the building inspector, not me.
Oh, yeah, well, it's like, well, ask him.
Because sometimes, I think they leave them vague a little bit, because I think they.
It's a different rotation, you do.
Sometimes, because I looked at this, and everyone we asked tells you something different. And I'm never counting, and ever.
I called Ball Ground this week and I had one lady tell me you did need a permit for siding. I had somebody else call down there and they said you didn't need it.
There, Walmart said no.
I called Pickens County and the same thing happened. The people I talked, the girl I talked to on the phone, yeah, yeah, because consider renovation, that's how we know. So we know to come in and check it for, increase the tax value. And then the girl, the one that actually called me back said no, because it's not, you know, you're not doing anything structurally, so.
So in discussions, what's required, what requires a building permit on here? They have new construction additions, including patios, decks and porches, renovation work, including new doors, windows remodeling, involving electrical and plumbing, and storage sheds over two hundred square feet. What they have is, does not, would be counter painting, wallpaper, tile, carpeting, cabinets, countertops, storage sheds under two hundred square feet, fences under seven foot tall, and retaining walls under four feet tall. Patios and deck permits and porches is a hundred bucks, electrical is a hundred and plumbing is a hundred, doors and windows is a hundred. It says doors and windows permit are not required for every single event replacement. Permit is required for extensive replacements such as over fifty percent of the windows and fifty percent of the doors. So I guess that's if somebody's coming in remodeling, changing out all the windows and all the doors in it. So keep, keep, keep your eye on that one. And if you guys think of something else, take a look at what we have. If you want Kelsey to email you what's current, what we currently have right now. We don't have anything, though?
And it's not usually in a county or city's ordinances. It's just there on the website, it's just kind of this vague thing. And I must, I'm presuming it is somewhere in the building code, I'll look into that and see.
According to Lamar, it's, it's kind of written into the International Building Code, but then it's one of those, like, you would have to go and look to specify to.
It probably, it must not have a convenient list.
No, there's not.
Well, I think that's why the county is, like Cherokee County started doing this. I know Pickens is working on something similar, just to give an idea of what you do and do not need it for. So when people ask, you can at least, here's, here's a starting point.
I think reading Cherokee's is kind of a.
It is, and it leaves it vague, so, I mean, because there's times that there's an exception to every rule.
So you know, like Pickens, like on the day, if you couldn't replace your deck, it's smelling two hundred square feet.
Well, they tell me the other day that as long as you're not changing the footprint. So if you're making it bigger, then.
So you tire your existing one down and put one back just like you did in October.
Exactly.
Remember, somebody says the opposite, if they make you have a permit. It was a debt company at one point and that's something they were complaining about. They have to go get a permit everywhere, they go do debts.
And again, it depends on who you talk to, because that was the first leg of acting. So I don't, there's nothing, and that's what I'm saying, we just need something, something, so when people call, I don't, I don't know. And I'm the only one here that didn't answer the phone, so.
So what we'll do with this one here is, we'll, we'll come back at it in September, give everybody an opportunity to review it, think about it. And then if you have any questions to ask, call down and we can get whatever information that you're, what you're looking at from our building code stuff.
First thing, we make it strict, we don't pay for, or they can't do anything.
No.
I don't know, we just need something. Because right now, I mean, there's times that I've probably made people get permits for things that they didn't need. I've made a guy get a permit to have the driveway checked, because we weren't sure where things stood. Pickens doesn't require you to get them. We don't have anything that says if you do or not, and Cherokee does require you to get them. So I called William Ford.
Oh, for shop this or something?
Well, it's a check to, to connect to a road. And I called William and I talked to him and he goes, well, technically you don't have to get it, but everything was, it's that gray thing. So we did just a, it was a base permit fee of thirty dollars to have him go put eyes on it, because it was on Revice Mountain, like near where the, the starts to slope down. And he was fine with it. I mean, we, I didn't have any problems with him, but, you know, just little things like that, that, you know, thirty bucks, you know, we're not killing with it, and that way it covers us and covers him and everything's fine. I think HEC was doing the work, so it wasn't something that anyone was concerned about.
Yeah, and too, I think this list here is relatively small. I mean, it's the, the list with what requires a building permit. It's kind of small.
And it's used to be.
And it does, it keeps a kind of a, you know, but it covers us at the same time. So take a look at that, and if there's something else we need to add to that, or you guys want to see added to it, then we can, we can add it and then put it back on the agenda for September. So let's say if it, this memo right here, after one, then.
It's right there sometime.
The very first one says what requires a building permit, that's the, that's the, there's four things on here.
The Cherokee one. Wait, you know the Cherokee packet here? And it's there's two pages.
I'll share it, yeah.
Yeah, but I'm just saying that they would stay together. It's right before F.
Have anything that you, you want added or subtracted back into Kelsey by the fifth of September?
Would that be moved to September seventeenth, fourteen? As it will possibly have happened for Miss Kable. Because the seven is over there.
So if we have, if we have anything to add back into you by the fifth, then we can put something together and put it out to the council.
That's for seven.
So have, have any changes or any additions to building permits or not required back into Kelsey by the fourth?
I'll try and meet that same deadline for proposed changes to the ordinance.
We can discuss the change, just so you got to get the signs stuck.
Or you can just send it out.
Item F, discuss and vote, write off old property tax bill errors. And Kelsey, I know that's what you've been working on, and why you take that one?
This is another parent. I'm not going into specifics with this, this is our current arrears list. The ones in commas are the ones that have credits, which we're also going to have to deal with too. If you go down towards the bottom of the first page, the ones that are, starts with like the one oh four, seven oh one, a lot of the ones, the ones there, and some of them will have a P after it. And they run down about halfway down the second page. These are the specific ones right now. A lot of these people, these are like personal property taxes for boats, for equipment taxes. There's like two or three different categories you get taxed on, like items. So it's not like the taxes on your house or whatever. A lot of these people do not live here. They did not live here apparently for the years that they were taxed on. And one that has a particularly high balance, I know I've talked to James about this particular person, and he did not live in the city during this time. But because I guess it wasn't done through the county, it just keeps adding up and showing us arrears on our tax register. But I talked to the auditor and she said if we go on record, it's something that I can verify that it's legitimate. It's also maybe just saying it wasn't mine, I didn't own it, da-da-da, that we can write it off, but it just has to be public record, that it was council approved, da-da-da. There's some that I know, because we have some parcels that were duplicates, that I could go in and verify in one parcel that they had paid it, or it's shown or not, if they not paid it. Those I could go in and we've already taken care of some of those, because you can see where it was clearly a screw up in the system. But anyway, some of these are ones that, some of them aren't going to, which I don't really do, we're going to have to deal with. But some of them are ones that I've had the people come in and are like, we didn't even own the boat because they've got back taxes on. We didn't even have, da-da-da, that year, I didn't live here in the city during these years. Because some of these go way back, this isn't like one year.
Now, like boats and stuff, you pay back when you buy your time, don't you?
No, you get a, you still have another tax on certain things. It's a boat, it's like boat, and then there's ones like any of those. There's like several different categories of things, and it's not a whole lot. It is like personal, taxes on personal.
Personal property.
Yes, those things. Yes, me either, until it kept popping up and then people coming in like angry and.
So these veterans' currencies are, they need refunds?
The ones in the currencies, I still have to go back and verify that, because there were a couple that had some weird credits put on there back like ten years ago.
Less than a thousand.
Well, there's one, the last one on there, the credit of like a hundred dollars, that I still, that was a, that was a utility that I still have to go back and check that one, because that, that whole thing was weird. Whereas if they made a payment on it and somebody went and credited, yeah. I'm just trying to figure it out. But we're just trying to get some of these off the books, but some of them I have to have permission and I want to just start writing off the tax stuff, because that's not the same as doing a trash bill, and it is just a screw up.
So this is not only in taxes, is that what you were saying?
Seventeen bit by Ray Mountain Road.
No, not, that's a different one. And the ones that are like this year's things, if somebody just hasn't paid, that's different. Some, there's some, and there's a few in here that we've talked about also, that people that are here, they just aren't paying their taxes. Just straight up aren't paying them. That we're going to have to deal with. There's some that are made that have payment arrangements, they're coming in and paying them. And as long as they're paying something, I don't care. I mean, people don't have a lot of money for that stuff right now, and that's fine. The top one on page three is the one that we're currently in works with, so that one will be gone soon too. That I want, that taken care of and stuff. And some people will intentionally overpay and leave it as credit for next year. The bottom one on page two is one that we was talking about, they just will not pay it. For years and years.
Property tax or personal?
Property tax.
We used to build in's.
Yeah, and I've sent notices and notices and.
Paper profligate, I haven't seen that.
Been long time?
Yeah, that's the.
We went through a whole spade of if. We went through all the spade of if a number of years ago, get liens out there and follow whatever the required process is.
Take a look at that with you later this week.
Yeah, the one that's one, two, three, four, five, the fifth one down is also not a legitimate one, I know for a fact that one's paid as a duplicate parcel, and when I've gone in to try to fix it, the system can't even find it for me to fix it, and that it will print it out every single time on this one.
And what the county does is generates a lien every year, of course, I mean, they file a lien every year, somebody hadn't paid, they'll eventually sell the property for unpaid taxes.
So, yeah, there's, there's not a whole lot of them here that we have a problem with, but there's a handful of them that just, it doesn't matter how many times I send the letter, they just, also certify, return receipt to make sure, and can still be nothing. That one guy come in and said, I paid my arrangements, I won't pay them, and that's near now, yeah. So, but the main ones I'm wanting, I just want permission to clear off the ones that I know, like that I've had conversations with people, and that we've researched, especially the particularly hard, towards the end of page one, I've talked to, who knows, the guy who got it in one here, cause this one went back like ten years.
Steven Grading at Holland, two thirteen's.
He didn't, he didn't even live here.
Yeah, he ain't gonna move, that's...
Yeah, but it's still generating.
It was still adding up.
Yeah, and there isn't a way for me to separate it, it's showing as a past due balances on, we've gotten rid of a lot, cause it used to be our total arrears was like closer to thirteen thousand, and we've gotten rid of it.
Did it tell them what it's for, or anything like that?
Um, it's, I think it was equipment, or something.
Yeah, it is almost for equipment.
And it wasn't even near that, most of that is penalties and interest. Yeah, arrears is seven fifty-four, penalties is seven oh seven.
I see him in the morning, I want them to get in here and take care of that.
Well, I mean, I know...
They've been going down here, but...
I know, but he didn't live here, so, I mean, this is a matter, and it's just something that just keeps going and going and going, and it just looks like...
Yeah, they been coming from up here.
Yeah, when he lives that now, he turned there to Jeep place.
And we can't actively collect taxes on, that are more than five hundred anyway. I mean, I can send a letter, I can't actively...
My house is done, so I would never find that either, then.
So, I just want permission to write off the ones that I can verify, or...
I think the right way to do that, satisfy the auditor, is probably you figure out which ones you can verify, don't need to be charged, bring that back as a list, and have the council vote on that specific list, that's probably what it takes to satisfy the auditor, see if the council voted on specific bills, zero them out.
Yeah, and we'll, go ahead and put that back on for September, and then these that we need to return, let's go ahead and get some information as well.
Well, I have a file on this one, so...
Okay.
What did you say?
The ones that, that we need to pay back, the ones that are...
The credits, or...
Yeah, the credits.
Maybe we'll get rid of these, and then we'll do it back, cause especially that big credit, maybe something have to do with it.
The small ones are ones that have to go back and see if it was, if it was never paid, or if it was, it's just a whole other thing. Okay, let's set a timeline for it, then, let's do that one, let's do the credits for October. Okay, so we won't vote on that tonight, we'll, we'll come back with a, with a solid list in September. Next up is discuss and vote on road repairs for Old Nelson Road, Hillside, and Cherokee Shelter.
So to fix the, the road at Hillside and Cherokee, the total came out five fifteen, that was through the county, they're already out here, it was three tons of asphalt, sixty-five dollars a ton, but I went, I told them to go and do that one, and then get it on their schedule, while they were out there, anybody that put on with this one, because the other one that's up in front of the quarry was much bigger, he said it, it wasn't just that one little area, apparently it messed up, it was going way out.
Yeah, they just posed a problem running there.
He said it was about sixty-five feet, and he said, really, he could go a little bit further each way, but that was like the worst, I'm gonna have the whole email thing going, that, which may explain a little more, but the total estimate is basically sixty-five feet, but six feet, I think that went down maybe a foot, if I'm remembering correctly, and it was, the estimate was between fifty-two seventy and fifty-four forty, and this is worst case scenario, you know, so he's given me, you know, he said it could be eight to ten guys, up to two trucks, so whatever I was estimating, and I did it at ten guys and two trucks, so there was a chance it could be a little bit less than that, but...
And that'll be a fat, and the one up here.
The five fifteen is the one at Hillside Cherokee, this estimate here was for the one on Nelson, he actually, he wanted me to date, see if we were gonna do this one, cause I think they're planning on being out of here soon, so if they're gonna do it, I think they're trying to get the crews lined up, to, cause he said somebody's gone up at some point, cause he had said something about concrete also, and I asked him, give me an estimate of concrete, and I think somebody had gone at some point and poured concrete in there to try to patch it or something.
Somebody did.
And I don't know if it was the quarry people, or what, cause I think he thought we might have done it, and I'm like, it's why I done it, we haven't ever done anything with it, so, I don't think there's any, there'll be any concrete having anything to do with that, but, anyway, it just, basically if it's not fixed, it's gonna get worse.
Yeah, it's...
It's gonna be bad.
And so, what I think about the rock quarry, should they help out on fixing the firing and stuff like that?
They can say, that's all they want, it doesn't mean they're gonna...
I mean, the bridge, that's for a...
Oh, I'm sure.
Yeah, it's probably bad material underneath for a collar.
You've got the quarry, and you have a stair company there too, it's kind of the perfect storm with...
Yeah, that's for like, come out of there, that's...
I love the shields, you know, but, yeah, that's, well, William Kyle May said they could probably do it a lot cheaper, because he don't have a milling machine, he don't have to dig it out.
And I, the other company, I called two or three other companies, when you and I talked about, and I can't even get calls back on it, and I know the county, the county's literally just giving us their rates on, we're paying the labor and whatever the material cost is, so there's not a bump up on anything.
Any other questions? Can I get a motion to approve the repairs for Old Nelson Road and Hillside and Cherokee Shelter?
I'd like a motion to approve the repairs of Old Nelson Road and Hillside Circle.
And Cherokee.
Shelter.
And Cherokee Shelter.
Can I get a second, please?
I'll say it.
All in favor? You down? Thank you, okay. Executive session, do you have anything for executive session?
Yes.
Okay.
What category?
It was employee for sanitation and the stuff with the tree.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, everything.
Personnel, I bet, move personnel.
It was personnel with sanitation.
It's not free, yeah, I'm probably...
Yeah, I have...
Can I get information on that? Can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session?
I'd like a motion to adjourn, six, six.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? You know what's...